Good morning and happy Monday morning. It is nine o'clock. Brazos County Commissioners Court, Budget Workshop, Day Five?
Day Six.
Or Six.
Day Six.
It is Day Six.
Day Thirty-Nine. That's what it feels like.
Welcome, and the Commissioners Court recognizes Nina Payne.
Good morning and happy Monday. I hope everybody had a relaxing weekend. Today is going to be the last day of our general fund, going over all the departments in our general fund. Today, we're going to listen to several functions, which is law enforcement, juvenile, public transportation, public health, and human services. First off, we're going to discuss law enforcement, which is about sixteen percent of the overall general fund budget. Keep in mind, they house over three hundred employees. So this one function has over three hundred employees, so keep that in mind. And we're going to go ahead and kind of skip out of order. We're going to have Constable Three come up first. Overall budget increase is eighty-two thousand dollars. This is due to the cost of living as well as Axon. And so I want to have Constable Three come up.
Good morning.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Calder Lively, Chief Deputy, Precinct Three, Constable's Office. And Nina is awesome. So we'll start off with that. If you go to Slide Ten, Page Ten, starts our budget request. And if anyone in the audience would like a copy, we can provide them a copy later. My deputy, Chris Giordano, has my business cards for that. For our budget request, we're requesting two Stalker LIDAR, RLR handheld radars, four Black Rack Weapon Retention Systems for four patrol cars, four Motorola Extended Life handheld radio batteries for the radios that we keep on our body. The total budget impact is nine thousand four hundred and two dollars. And if you'd like, I can go into detail why we're asking for the equipment.
Commissioners, any requests for detailed information?
No.
No.
None at this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation.
See you, Calder.
Okay, next up is going to be the Sheriff's Office Administration. Of course, they have several divisions that will go into detail. The first one's going to be the admin portion of it. The total increase to budget is nine hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred forty-one dollars, which is a nine percent increase compared to last year's budget. Five point ninety-three overall. Keep in mind that this, one of the biggest increases will be due to Axon. And so I'll go and have the sheriff and his team come up and do a presentation and explain.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
And you are?
I'm sorry, Lieutenant Garrett House from the Sheriff's Office Admin.
Lieutenant House, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. So our biggest changes, I'll kind of hit the highlights. We are requesting for a one-time increase to get into our uniform budget, to get rain gear for the SWAT team. Kind of have to have specialty stuff for that to go over all the equipment. We're also asking for a ten percent general increase to what we typically spend in body armor. It's just gotten more expensive. We're up to about eleven hundred dollars a vest at this point. We are also looking for a five thousand dollar increase in our firearms readiness budget, which is for kinetic breaching supplies. These are basically explosive breaching for emergency situations, hostage rescue, that kind of stuff. That should decrease fairly quickly after that. There's an initial train-up that we're currently already cycling through. We'll have to spend a little bit more money to get through that first year or two with the new breachers, and then that money should come down. The recruiting fund, we are taking that money, and we're going to move that to the detention center, to the jails budget. Recruiting is primarily a function of the jail, about ninety percent, so just some housekeeping stuff we did there. We moved those two divisions, or we moved that division over. Computer contracts, you'll see a larger increase in that one over this last year. That is primarily due to us taking over three different programs that the Human Trafficking Task Force Grant was paying for, that it will no longer pay for. So these are, this is software that works not only for human trafficking, but that we use for internal, I'm sorry, for criminal investigations as well. So, and then there's also an increase of about eleven thousand dollars for a onboarding addition to one of our contracts that we currently have. So we're currently using Power DMS. It's a software to run our field training program. We want to increase that budget for an onboarding program for that as well. So it basically helps us get new people. The FTO program helps us get people in, or trained. The onboarding program helps us get people in the dorm. Any questions on those before I?
Commissioners, any questions? House, continue. Thank you.
All right. The next increase that you would see is the Sabita funds. So these are computer programs again. I feel like we were doing a lot of computer stuff this year. Really, we've done that for the last several years. You know, crime is on the internet, and every case that we touch has got some type of computer involvement at this point. So we're using a lot of that. But this covers our, the, well, FUSIS program is going to be removed from there. So FUSIS was a contract that we had separate of Axon, but it is now rolled into the Axon contracts. It's about one hundred and twenty-five. It is gone from there. And then we'll have LexPole KMS, which is our policy management software that we use. Just keeps everybody up to date on our current policies and practices. And then the SHIELD program, which is our internal affairs and employee conduct and use of force reporting program.
Before you go any further, Nina, you, on this page that you have all these things that he's asking, is that, what, is that under that eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars?
It's under this amount of increases.
It's under what?
The increases to what they're fully asking for.
Like the computers, I mean, the software?
Is going to be under the contracts and services.
Is that thing?
Yes.
There she has it right there for you.
So you're talking about only thirty-four hundred dollars? Okay. But then he was, he was talking about some other things before that.
Yeah, repairs and maintenance.
Repairs and guns and?
Repairs and maintenance, eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollar increase.
Within your packet, you have the line item budget, but there might not be such a big? In your agenda packet, that was sent out about a week and a half ago.
That was what?
That was sent out.
Oh, I didn't bring that down. Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry, I didn't bring that down.
No, it's okay. And so y'all have?
I will suggest that she brings her iPad next week.
Yep. Sorry.
No, you're fine. So in your, in your packet, they have their line item budget in there, which explains all the notes on increases and decreases.
Okay.
On some of the departments, because of some of the, it was a one-time only this year, might be a decrease. So it equals out. And so you have to review the line item budget.
But is it listed in any of these dollar amounts here?
Yes. And so what's requested is eleven million dollars. And so your increase to this budget is nine hundred sixty-eight thousand. And so what he was talking about, like, equipment is going to be under the supplies and other charges, which is a decrease of forty-nine thousand, because there's other items that were able to decrease in order to cover the costs.
It was under what?
It was, if we were able to decrease either?
No, no, but you said it's under what?
Supplies and other charges. So the negative forty-nine thousand for equipment. Either this year was one-time expenses that were more than what he's asking for this year, so that's why there's a decrease. Regarding repairs and maintenance, it's going to be more like your Axon or your ongoing computer contracts, because it's repair, or for the batteries or for equipment.
Okay.
And so that's where some increases.
My apologies. I didn't bring, you bring yours? I'm not the only one.
I did skip over something that I'll go back and do real quick. We are also asking for new, for new CMV load scales, so commercial motor vehicle scales. We currently only have two. That doesn't give you an accurate enough reading. It always falls on the side of the truck. The truck seems lighter than it actually is. So we need to upgrade that, get to four so that we can individually weigh everything on a trailer. And then we're also asking for four new laptops for our special investigations unit that are not on the county's network and can do some of that work there. And then we have rental facilities. We've increased that by about three thousand dollars. TEACs is what we have to use for all of our training rentals, from firearms to building searches and all of that stuff. They've had a cost increase for renting those props out there. And so we're increasing that, as well as every other year, we do our EVOC training. It's a emergency vehicle operators training. So we have to rent extra space and run all of the deputies through that. So that increases and decreases every other year. We're on the increase this year. And then, lastly, our counseling services funds, that's also going to get moved to the jail division's budget, because that's primarily done with the psychologicals for new hires. So through recruiting. Okay.
Commissioners, any questions? Continue.
I think that is the majority of what I have for you, is the big changes. Obviously, we had Axon and things that we've already gone over.
Commissioners? In the house, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate.
Next up is going to be the jail administration. There's two divisions that will go into discussion. The jail administration portion of it is an increase to the budget of one point one million dollars. Five percent overall. This is eleven point four, four, I mean, five percent compared to last year's budget, eleven percent overall. The next one that we will kind of go into discussion regarding jail medical, remember, we deleted this division to create a new jail correctional medicine. And so that's why it's a negative one point four. I'll go and ask for the jail administration to come up and discuss their budget.
Good morning, Chief Stewart.
Hello. Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Kevin Stewart, Precinct Four. I don't know if that helps me any at all.
Home and office?
Just trying. So I want to hit a few things that are, I feel like they're critically important. I wanted to start off with one that Lieutenant House mentioned, because it gets a little confusing. There's a lot of stuff moving around. But that, the recruiting budget, moving from the sheriff's office over to the jail, we reduced, we actually reduced that by twelve thousand dollars in order to add a component to the onboarding that Lieutenant House mentioned. So that covers that. And it's, so whenever we get to that point, it really is, that's a wash on the budget. We've reduced recruiting so that by the amount that that additional component to NeoGov costs. And so we're, I wanted to highlight that, because we're moving some money, and then it may get lost. But when we get down to that and we're running through the line, and the reason I'm mentioning that one, not only because it's, there's no budget impact to it, there's, that software is what we call a force multiplier. You know, we talk about that a lot. That's going to help expedite getting people hired, doing a lot of the work that it takes our recruiting office to do. It automates and helps make that more efficient. And so for a, for a small cost, you know, it would take multiple people to do, and we're talking about twelve thousand dollars. And also, it's not actually costing the county anything. So I just don't want, I know that, I don't want it to get lost in the, in the mix of everything.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any questions on that particular piece?
Commissioners?
No.
And obviously, we'll be here so we can, if we get to that and there's any confusion, we can clear up, we will. All right. So the, the next item that I wanted to highlight is, we're in the process of trying to get a K-9 unit for the jail division. And what's on the budget today is a request to increase the budget by eight thousand dollars. And that covers operational costs, like food, veterinary care, some training, and initially building a kennel and things like that. So that's things that are not able to cover by any kind of grant funding. The actual K-9 program itself is, all the training and the dog are free to us through a grant program. We have to get that approved and some of the things in motion. But we have to be able to know that we're going to, that we can buy the dog food before we move. And we have to identify who's going to be running that program so that we can apply for the grant. And then that comes with a vehicle, which we're able to, you sent a Bill Twenty-Two money to purchase. That's a major part of the actual cost of the program. And so when all that discussion is going on, the actual cost of the county that we're asking is eight thousand dollars, and that's just to maintain. And a little background on the reasoning for wanting this, because it's, we haven't had one before. And so in that sense, it's a little bit of a unique request. But there's actually a nationwide problem that's going on with contraband coming into jails. And it's not the typical contraband that's been there in the past. We're talking about things like fentanyl, K-2, and actually just, they're kind of mixing different chemicals that don't really, don't really hit on a test at all, and applying that to paper. And this paper is coming in. And we were doing pretty well for a while. The Texas Department of Criminal Justice had a huge problem with it, and they still do. And the problem is, you can't detect it. So the DEA has some equipment, and you can buy some expensive equipment that's about a hundred thousand dollars, or eighty thousand dollars, I think, that'll kind of scan and tell you what's on there. But you have to find what you're scanning first. You know, you got to, you have to identify something that's suspicious and then take it to the machine. And so it's really problematic. And we, in fact, you know, when we have somebody that's in TDC, we have some things that are in place, but to prevent things like that from coming in. But it's a constant fight. And you had somebody that was in the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, where they have a big problem, and then they get bench warranted back. And so they show up in our jail with a sack full of paperwork and legal paperwork that they're allowed to have. And so it's really difficult to hone in on what's coming in. And so we've been working with that, but in the last, in the last month, we've had a couple of people that we actually had to use Narcan on. They were having some kind of, they were in distress and appeared to be intoxicated. And so it's a scary thing for us, and we've been blessed for a while. But it's really problematic. And so, so that's kind of come home. And we feel like this is the best, especially for eight thousand dollars. It's the best way to identify and eradicate that from our jail. And, you know, I don't think the cost to officers' health and well-being, and then medical bills and all that, it really, we're hopeful that this is a program that'll work. And?
So the dogs can alert on those items?
Yeah. So just a real brief summary of what you can do with a dog. And by the way, this is not going to be a bite dog or a dog that tracks people. Its sole purpose in life is going to be to smell out contraband. So you can train a dog on different things that you want it to be an expert in. And really, it could be anything. It could be marijuana, cocaine, fentanyl, things like that. There are typical, K-2, cell phones, you know, they can smell electronics. So you get them trained in those things. And so that's great. But one of the, one of the things that I'm looking forward to is, you know, I mentioned that there, we have some folks that are just out in the community. It's not just our community. I'm talking about out. You know, they're mixing, they're mixing different types of chemicals that don't really register, mixing them together. And, you know, it's kind of rolling the dice. You know, you may get a little high, but it's not detectable, and it may, obviously, it's dangerous. But when you have a, when you have a dog that's working in an environment all the time, it does know how to alert to those specific things. But also, it knows how its environment smells. And so even if it's not trained on one particular chemical, when you're walking it around, it knows that something's different. And it kind of, it'll alert you to, hey, there's something different over here you might want to look at. And so it could, so even if it's not something that it was specifically trained on, it can help us with this kind of, you know, the goalpost keeps moving, per se. And so it knows, hey, something's different over here. And so now we're looking at, hey, there's something right here that we need to take a look at. And we can actually find it, and saves time and gets that out of there. Because otherwise, you're searching vast amounts of paperwork and things like that, that you just don't really, you don't really have any idea. And so on multiple levels, helpful, just having the, having the K-9 is just a deterrent in and of itself. But then actually finding things, that's the goal. Eventually, we don't want it to find anything. You know, that's a happy day for us. But again, that's the, that's kind of the Cliff's Notes version on what we're looking at. It's a pretty serious problem that we're having. And we've been attempting numerous different things on how to scan legal paperwork coming in. You can go on the internet and buy a document pre-soaked that'll get mailed to the facility, and it looks like it's from an attorney or from something that is considered privileged mail, that jails aren't allowed to read. And so it passes through some of that scrutiny. And so that's kind of the world we're living in now. You can just, you can just buy it on the internet. It comes in and, you know, it's, it's pretty scary. So anyway, so that's the, that's the hope and the goal of this project. And then again, the vast majority of the funds are actually through different types of grants that we've already accounted for, and we're kind of moving forward. But the, unfortunately, we can't maintain the program unless we can spend a small amount to feed the dog and, you know, get shots and take it to the vet occasionally. And so.
Commissioners, any questions on the jail dog?
No.
Is it one dog or two?
Just one.
One dog. Commissioner Brown? I always look at grants with a jaundice eye, because there's always a lot of strings attached that we don't realize until, until the grant is gone. So I guess my question is, what is the ongoing cost of this, of this program after the grant is over?
So I'll, I'll ask Lieutenant Marinari if he has any specific things. But my understanding is the ongoing cost is this eight thousand dollars annually to pay for food and actually?
Food, vet?
Food, vet, and building an initial, some of that's?
And the dog is donated, correct?
The dog is donated.
Most likely, K-9 for cops. If those have not seen that, please look them up as well.
And his handler is trained at the same time?
Yeah, we had to, we've gone through that selection process. We haven't selected the person yet. We just interviewed last week. You know, all this is kind of coming together, and it hinges on whether we're going to get some funding in this particular case here. But once we identify that person, then we submit for the grant. It'll come before Commissioners Court to be voted on at that time. And then we send the handler with the dog, and they get trained together. And then that's, you know, typically, it's a five-year commitment for that officer. You get about five years or so out of a, out of a working dog. And then the vehicle that we're going to purchase, that has sent a Bill Twenty-Two money, will, you know, it's, it's really just to be transported to and from training and, and to the jail. And so minimal, we, we expect that to last for the, the whole life of that, that particular?
Chief Stewart, do you know right offhand how many K-9 units we have across all departments in the Brazos Valley?
I don't, I don't know exactly, but there's probably four, five.
Risk management just held up a big goose egg in the bag.
Oh, and for Brazos County?
So Bryan PD, College Station?
Yeah, UPD and College Station PD have a K-9 unit, and they're, there's five.
Five.
Yeah.
Because we lost our, the game warden K-9 unit, it's no longer intact.
But Brazos County has?
Five total.
Yeah.
This will be six. This will be six.
And for the
And then we looked at Jason Ware with having six dogs to help detect bombs somewhere.
Yeah, we've had to yeah, I think it's Bertlessen County's K-9. We've had a couple of times where we've had we've asked for assistance for those dogs to come in. But it's more it's really more effective when you have one that that's what their specific focus in life is because these dogs do other things for enforcement. So
This strictly to help you at the jail stop the new contraband coming through the doors?
That's great. Thank you.
Wild world we're living in.
Yeah, it's been a everybody's done a great job researching this, my staff, because it's really scratching your head sometimes.
Yeah.
Trying to trying to keep up with some of the technology and the methodology that they're using. Okay. The next increase. I need to find a different word for that. We want to keep saying increase.
The next request.
The I still have some credits, I think, from a vehicle, so a couple of cars. But our next request is related to clothing and uniform budget. And that's there's a multi multi-part to that is the cost of uniforms and equipment is just going up a little bit. And so that takes that into account. And also previously, we haven't bought any equipment for any of our new officers. So when they come in, we give them a uniform, but they don't have a belt. They don't have any handcuffs. If they're a peace officer, they don't have a gun. They don't have a flashlight, nothing. And so we're trying to start standardizing twofold standardizing some equipment so that we all have the same equipment, but also if it's a professional law enforcement agency, some of the applicants that we're seeking, they kind of expect that we're going to give them some equipment. And so it's not a giant cost. I think it's about $300 per new hire. But again, the the effect of it is kind of a multiplier helps us in multiple ways. Get some equipment, but also helps with bringing in. That one's kind of hard to quantify, but if you can imagine your apply, you have a lot of choices on where you want to apply. And when you're looking at agencies and picking one, sometimes these nickel and dime things seem ridiculous, but they have a huge psychological effect on where I'm picking where I want to go to work, you know, to get the impression of who's running the professional organization. And so that's that's that request to to clothing and uniform. Any specific questions on that?
Commissioners?
All right. The next I'm not going to talk about every single one of them, so sorry, bear with me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There's a request in there for you know, I wish I could come up here and be like Lieutenant Garrett House and ask for some cool equipment, but every once in a while, I got to ask for money to fix lawnmowers and weed eaters. And so
You you had us at the doggy deal.
Yeah.
We like that.
Yeah, it's my first time. Is that how it feels? So yeah, we have it. There's a request in there to for some replacement equipment as well as increases the maintenance to fix some of that equipment. And so there's really that kind of speaks for itself. It's just things that are used by inmate work crews that maintain maintain our grounds and then some of that's used at the various, you know, facilities like the Expo and Roden Bridge and things like that. Nothing too controversial about that one.
Commissioners, any questions about maintenance?
You've missed your point. He was waiting for you to say, we're good.
I was waiting for a good one. I thought I had a question over there about the lawnmowers.
Chuck's was not appropriate. Sorry.
Saying you could get a drug sniffing goat and maybe cut two birds with one stone, but
But I need
Sticking out of the box, you know.
I do need $8,000 for the goat so I can take it to the vet. All right.
Tried to save you.
Sorry.
At least it's inappropriate. That leaves imagination out there.
It is a good idea, though.
Just trying to help.
All right.
Instead of fixing lawnmowers, I guess you could have a couple of goats.
Yeah, you wouldn't have any grass left, but you just have some circles out there. They're very efficient at what they do.
Well, in all seriousness, the public needs to know you guys do maintain a lot of property out there, so this is going to be necessary expenditure.
It is funny because sometimes it comes up like, you know, why does this cost this much when I can go to you know, the one that I buy and I, you know, I may go to Harbor Freight or something to buy some of my gear, but this stuff is used five days a week, you know, it has a lot more wear and tear. And so it's not typical, you know, keeping up with the household, so.
Right.
All right. And then and then really, I just wanted to hit on again about the mixed in with one of these requests is that $12,000 that's for NeoGov for for that part that we've we've made an adjustment for. And then there's also a $12,000 request for scheduling software. And so that is something that's different to make that distinction. And the best way I can put this for you is that we have you know, close to 200 employees just in the jail division. They work 24 hours 24 hours a day. These we have posts that have to be filled plus other positions that are Monday through Friday or, you know, there's various different moving parts in there. It's pretty complicated, especially when it comes to having staffing shortages, trying to make sure that we're evenly distributing where we're putting people on overtime and accounting for time off. And so a lot of time is spent on this and this is a pretty simple, it's actually not a lot of money when you look at some of the different options that are out there for what software costs. But this is a scheduling software that's specific to the law enforcement schedule that that we're using. And a lot of them aren't, you know, some of the ones that we they that we've used in the past that the county uses are they're great for Monday through Friday, eight to five stuff. But then when you have 12-hour shifts and trying to account for actual when somebody's off letting a supervisor know that someone's requested that off and how many staff that supervisor is going to have that day to make sure that they have the minimum standard required amount of people. They spend a lot of time on that now where we would like for them to be spending their time coaching and mentoring and supervising their staff. And having some software that simplifies that scheduling is really helpful. And so that's that's what that one is. Any questions about that? Commissioners? And then one mandate that's that is in there, and I think it does, I think it spells it out is there's an $8,000 increase and that's for the Prison Rape Elimination Act. We have to get audited every three years. And so that's coming up next year, juvenile facility and our facility. And so that $8,000 is for to pay for that auditing service that comes in to certify. Did I say that right? I thought you were shaking your head. I caught something in the corner of my
They're certifying that you've completed steps that are required through that act.
Yeah, the federal law, pre is a federal law that all jails, lockups, prisons, everybody has to be in compliance with. And one of the one of the mandates besides all the requirements for us day to day is that you are audited every three years. And so this is just a one of those things that came down from on high from the federal government that they're asking Brazos County to pay for. And the only other thing of note that I wanted to put in there that it's it's not a big it's not a big deal on the surface, but I wanted to bring attention to is just an increase to the furniture budget that's in there. It's just we have a lot of chairs and that's the big focus. And the idea is just so that we can periodically replace those chairs as they wear out. 24 hours a day does a lot to a chair. So it's and some of the chairs that we have, we've made some we've done things in the past to replace those, but it's kind of like a yearly a yearly ask. And so we're just moving into a better planning as we see it that it costs about this much. And so if we had this in our budget, we could buy the amount that we need every year to to rotate. And so that's what that that request is for.
Commissioners, questions for Chief Stewart?
It falls in the weed eater category.
I was into a what kind?
The weed eater category of excitement. Yeah. And so just in general, there, you know, those are the few that I wanted to highlight. But all the requests, you know, we do, we put a lot of thought into what are we spending, what do we actually need? And so I know that you all have a lot of difficult decisions to make, but we're just that's my job is to come up here and ask you for what what we need to get the job done. And so I appreciate your your time and consideration.
Chief Stewart, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions?
Nope.
Please do. Chief Stewart, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Payne?
To save the jail, because there was a lot of increases. He is in the beginning, they essentially had a decrease in their budget. There are several programs, there are several projects that are ongoing still. Say, for instance, the jail shower project that's ongoing, and so we're having to roll that project over, which is $300,000 estimated for next year because it started this year, but it won't shouldn't finish until Thanksgiving. We've also budgeted the eight housing unit to HVAC project, which is essentially $501,000 as well as the Axon contract. So essentially it was a decrease until we started adding projects that needed to roll into to next year's budget. And to speak on what Chief Stewart mentioned was that a couple of years ago, we tried to get the law enforcement to start planning out vest replacements as well as their uniforms, certain things so we could have a continuous ongoing costs instead of one year up, one year down, so they're able to plan better, like the radars and certain things in that nature, so we could see the future hopefully on those things. The next step is going to be jail medical. Like I stated, we're creating a new division, so that's a decrease. The CSISD school security, this is a contract with College Station ISD. We budget 100%, but College Station ISD reimburses us at 100%. So whatever we spend, we invoice them every quarter. They pay us in return for the security of their schools. Any questions regarding the CSISD school security line item?
Commissioners?
No.
We don't do BISD?
They have not requested our help. I think they did a third-party contract with law enforcement. Inauguration, that was a one-time expense. That's why it's nothing has been budgeted for next year. This is a new division that we moved from jail medical to jail correctional medicine. You can see we already discussed that one in personnel. It is an increase to the budget for next year of $2 million. And this is regarding the personnel and all expenses that was all the operations that was moved from the jail medical to this new division. So now we're going to discuss Constable Precinct 1. It's an increase of $88,000, 11% increase compared to last year's budget and .45% overall. I will ask for Constable 1 to come up. Okay, I will go ahead and present their budget. And the main increase is going to be the Axon contract. Any questions regarding Constable 1?
Binley?
Nope.
Next up is going to be Constable Precinct 2, an increase to the budget of $109,000. Again, this is due to the cost of living as well as the Axon contract. I will ask Constable Lampeau to come up.
Constable Lampeau, welcome.
I have nothing to do with that increase. Donald Lampeau with Constable Precinct 2's office. If you'll notice, our budget went down. That increase is due to it's out of my control. I had nothing to do with it. So that's all I can say. The only thing I'm asking for is we're going to start replacing some of our radars in our cars. Because these these radars have been used in probably four different vehicles to date. So we're going to start replacing with some new stuff. Last year, Ms. Payne had to help us. We had two crash, so we had to get two new ones. So we put that in this year's budget. That's it. We went down. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Constable Lampeau?
None.
Mr. Condolee?
Thanks for thanks for going down. We understand that the Axon and Cola are
Thank you, Miss Constable Lampeau. Ms. Payne?
We've already discussed Constable Precinct 3. The next step that you can see years ago, we had a K-9 unit until the dog was retired back in 2023. Constable Precinct 4, a total increase of $113,000, 10% compared to last year and .65 overall. I will go ahead and ask Constable 4, Constable Carter, come up here and discuss his budget.
Welcome, Constable Carter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As a kind of Carter, Constable Precinct 4. Judge Commissioners, I'm back again.
Welcome.
Any questions about the budget?
Nope.
Same thing, Axon and Cola.
Commissioner Watson?
Nope.
We're basically just asking what we need and I just want you to to think about it. And I appreciate if you can. Not then all I want to do is just point it out there for you. I know the other last time that I was here, there were some things I forgot to put on, but I know this is not the place for that. But basically, whatever we do, we're doing in the best interest of Brazos County, Constable Precinct 4. And that's what we do.
Commissioners? Constable Carter, thank you so much.
Thank you. So that concludes the law enforcement. Total budget for the law enforcement function is $42,600,000, 8% overall. I mean, 8% increase compared to last year. Any questions regarding the law enforcement function? We're going to go ahead and go through juvenile real quick and then we'll take a little break. Juvenile services, their total admin budget is 8.4 million, an increase of $94,000 compared to last year. 1% compared to last year increase, 4.23 overall. Keep in mind, this is cost of living and she's asking to replace carpet in one of her in some of her dorms. I'll go ahead and ask Linda to come up.
Good morning, Linda.
Good morning.
Good morning. Linda Ricketson, Juvenile Services, and I've got this one, I think, is the one that needs to go down. I have enough for Aubrey, yes. As Nina said, basically, the two things that kind of upped our detention budget was we're asking to replace carpet in the detention center, our old part of detention. This carpet is over 15 years old and with the amount of traffic that we have in our detention center, I provided some pictures to you. It's ripping. It's dirty. It's unsanitary. You know, we've waited a long time to replace this carpet and we really need the carpet. So anyway, I'm asking for that. The second thing is that this came from IT. We need a new repeater for our radios because said that the current repeater's basic functions are still operational. However, Motorola has designed it end of life, which means they're not going to service it, repair it, or provide software updates. So this could put the county in a predicament. If the repeater were to fail, this might put employees and juveniles in the facility at a safety risk. So we really need to have that done and that's over $4,000. So I think that is basically the two things that caused our budget to increase more. And so do y'all have any questions about that?
Commissioners?
None whatsoever.
Thank y'all very much.
Linda, thank you.
I would really appreciate some new carpet. The kids would appreciate it.
Pictures are very obvious.
Yeah, yes. And and just thinking about kids and a 15-year-old carpet. Oh, Lord.
Okay, of course, they have a JJ AEP program. The only thing that's increasing is their salary benefits due to the cost of living as well as the commodities increase at $10,000. We match it up to the revenues that we receive from the feds. The next division is going to be the juvenile correctional medicine. This is where we moved that one nurse from the juvenile administration portion as well as the operation budget from the detention to cover this position. Total cost of next year's budget for juvenile services is 8.9 million. Total cost of next year's budget for juvenile services is 8.9 million, 3% increase compared to last year. Any questions regarding juvenile? I would like to ask for a five-minute recess, if that's okay, a little break.
Five-minute recess granted, thank you. We'll take a five-minute for the Budget Work Show today in Commissioners Court.